Darkness is not an affirmative force. It simply reoccupies the space vacated by the light.
This is the Hamilton Corner on American Family Radio.
It should be uncomfortable for a believer to live as a hypocrite.
Delivering people out of the bondage of mainstream media.
And the philosophies of this world.
God has called you and me to be his ambassadors, even in this dark moment. Let's not miss our moment.
And now the Hamilton Corner.
Good evening, welcome to the Hamilton Corner here on American Family Radio. I'm your host Abraham Hamilton III, and this is you're on your way to the weekend edition of the Hamilton Corner. You know, it's so true, what was said in the open that it should be uncomfortable for believers to live as hypocrites. If the spirit of God is indwelling us, it should be uncomfortable unsettling for us to profess one thing and to live something completely different, live in complete opposite of what we profess and what we declare. We want to make sure that our speech and our feet are consistent. Praise God. Well, many of you, if not most of you right now are in that point in your day where you are making that transition from your part-time jobs where you generate an income to your full-time jobs where you cultivate an outcome. And as you do that, let me remind you, as I do on a regular basis, that what goes on in your house is far more important, far more important than what goes on in the White House. We need to have that understanding, we need to embrace that reality as you're making that transition. I invite you to ask the Lord even now to prepare your mind, to prepare your heart to serve your families well. May the Lord operate in you and through you to establish your home as a sanctuary for his presence, that you would engage in doing the work of the ministry, proclaiming the gospel, shaping hearts and minds and making disciples, starting in your home. That's not the exclusive place for faithfulness, but it certainly is not a place that should be neglected as we endeavor to be faithful in other aspects of our lives. And all of this flows from the Lord's unfolding for us, his created order. The first institution that he created was the family before there was ever a New Testament church, before there was ever an order of priests, before there was ever a monarchy, before there was ever an understanding of civil government. The first institution that God created was the family. The first command that God uttered to mankind was uttered within the context of family. God did that so that we would understand the primacy that he places on family and that his primacy would inform our approach and understanding of family. What happens in your house is far, far, far more important than what goes on in the White House. Now, we're going to begin today in Acts chapter 17. This actually continues from the last, the conversation we had following the last caller during yesterday's program, which is a question that I get frequently and I understand the heart and the concern that drove the question, and it was simply that how then do we maintain a hopeful disposition in the face of all of this craziness that's happening in our country? All of the bad news, the seeming consistent insurgency that is being launched by regressives. And if you've been following the program for a while, you know why I describe regressivism as I do, because you cannot take a position that is in opposition to God and his word and simultaneously assert that you are advancing or progressing society. The only way to move is if you stand in opposition against God is backwards. That's why I don't describe this as a progressive movement. I describe it as a regressive movement. And the touchstone of generally the almost all progressivism as the term is historically known, which you know I describe as regressivism, is that it is undergirded by an atheistic theological framework. You know, it denies fundamental truths about human nature. It denies fundamental truths about God and its creation and often denies outright God's existence. Well, ain't no way you can move forward in advancement if that is a position that you hold, which is why I describe it as regressivism. Well, the question was, and they didn't use the term regressivism, but that's what they were describing in the face of the seeming undaunted advancement of regressivism, how do we maintain hope? And as always, my encouragement is to go to the scripture to line out how we think, how we approach life. And I alluded to this in my response to the caller's question, but I want to go into the text right at the beginning of this program today. So we're going to go to Acts chapter 17, verses 22 through 27. Acts chapter 17, verses 22 through 27. And this is where Paul encountered the Epicurean and Stoic philosophers on Mars Hill or in the Areopagus. Now, I want to remind you, I want to remind you that when Paul engaged in, this is I describe it, one of the most potent and profound evangelical and apologetics presentations recorded for us in scripture. Paul didn't go to Athens having in his mind, yes, I will ascend upon the halls of the learned to regale them with my theological treatise. No, Paul was running for his life. Paul was running, remembered that he was endeavoring to preach the gospel in Thessalonica. And then some Jews there whipped the crowd up into a frenzy and they tried to kill Paul and persecute his ministerial team. And Paul and his team left there, they headed to Berea. And then the people with the murderous penchant from Thessalonica followed him over to Berea. And it was in Berea where the apostle Paul makes the observation that there were Jews in Berea that were more noble than those at Thessalonica, because they said, let me investigate the scriptures, meaning the Old Testament, the Hebrew Bible, to see whether or not what Paul is saying is true. Well, the Thessalonican murderers or would-be murderers found their way to Berea and started rabble rousing there as well. And so Paul and his team split up. And Paul said, y'all go here, I'm going to go over here to Athens and I'm going to wait for you guys and they'll reconvene in the next city. And then the Bible says that Paul, when he hit Athens, he was overwhelmed by the evidence of their idolatry. And I've said to you guys before, one of the things that I strongly believe that moved Paul to respond to the idolatrous condition of Athens was that he was intimately familiar with having a zealous passion, a zealous religious passion, but void of Christ, void of the Messiah. And I believe Paul was able to resonate and identify with that condition in Athens. And so when he witnessed the prevalence of idolatry, which revealed a zealous passion, a zealous religious passion, albeit Christless, he immediately, as the Bible says, went into the marketplace, went everywhere he could to proclaim the gospel. As he shared the gospel in the marketplace, a couple Stoic philosophers heard him there and they were like, no, we got to have this cat to come on over to the Areopagus because they had this cultural habit and affinity for just hearing anything new. They didn't want to do anything with it, but they just liked to philosophize. All right. So that is the cultural, that is the contextual background for the information that is provided for us in Acts chapter 17, verses 22 through 27. So I'll pick up and read what the word of God says. So verse 22, "So Paul stood in the midst of the Areopagus and said, men of Athens, I observe that you are very religious in all respects. For while I was passing through and examining the objects of your worship, I also found an altar with this inscription, to an unknown God. Therefore, would you worship in ignorance? This I proclaim to you. The God who made the world and all things in it, since he is lord of heaven and earth, does not dwell in temples made with hands, nor is he served by human hands, as though he needed anything, as though he needed anything, since he himself gives to all people life and breath and all things. And he made from one man every nation of mankind to live on all the face of the earth, having determined their appointed times and the boundaries of their habitation, that they would seek God, if perhaps they might grope for him and find him, though he is not far from each one of us." I've explained this before. Paul, in sharing the truth of God's word frankly with the Athenians, he did not have a common point of reference with them in terms of their familiarity with the Hebrew scripture. So Paul used general revelation in the creation account and pointed them to the Messiah, the Christ, ultimately as the one who is the agent of creation. And in so doing, he points out that it is he, God, who made from one man every nation of mankind to live on all the face of the earth. I've explained before, the Greek word for nation there is ethnos, which is where our English word ethnicity is derived from. There's no such thing as multiple races of human beings, but ethnicity was created by God. And Paul makes the observation that mankind is created from one man or one blood, as the King James says. We have one common source of human ancestry. There is no such thing as multiple so-called races, as that term is commonly used of human beings. It is one race. It's called the human race. Then the Apostle Paul goes on to explain, and this same God who created all mankind from one common parental heritage source, it is the same God who has determined before time, God has sovereignly ordained and appointed the times in which you and I would live. So the fact that you and I woke up this morning in the year of our Lord 2021, in the 21st century, is not a mere coincidence. It's not a feature of biological occurrence. It is a factor of divine providence. It is a portion of God's sovereign appointment for you and I. So when I'm asked, how can you have hope? I cannot be, I can't be anything but filled with hope, because this is the time period that God has appointed for me. Then the word of God goes even further and he says, and it is the same God who made all mankind from one blood, the same God who has determined before time the times when you and I would be alive, and it is the same God who has determined the boundaries of our habitation, the borders, if you will. I've explained before that the concept of borders are biblical concept. God has determined the borders of where you and I would live. So when we consider that you and I woke up this morning in the year of our Lord 2021, in the 21st century, those of us who are in our right minds, praise be to God. But not only that, the fact that God has deposited you and me, who are residents and citizens of this United States of America, and if those who are listening in other countries, that God has deposited you where you live, this is a part of God's sovereign ordinance for us. The fact that we're living in our countries where we live, here I am in America, at the time where, you know, the regressives of the world are advocating for and advancing critical theory, the regressives of the world are advocating and advancing queer critical theory, which is evidenced by the advancement of the sexual deviancy political agenda, at the time where you have drag queen story hours, at the time where you have, you have men trying to assert a penchant for morality but void of the cross, where things seem to be going haywire in our times, brothers and sisters, this is the time that God has appointed you and I for. Then not only that, he tells us why, when you drop down to verse 27, he says, the same God who created us all from one blood, all mankind from one blood, who has determined before time the times that we would live and the boundaries of our habitation. He tells us why he did it, verse 27, so that men would seek God. You and I have been planted in this day, in this age, in this time, so that we would become outposts for the glory of God. That's why we're here. God is not wringing his hands and wondering, like the old Tiny Toon commercial, Looney Tunes commercial, which way did he go? Which way did he go? Which way did he go? No, the Lord is saying, oh my God, things have gotten so bad, I wonder what's going on, what's going on. God is not like that at all. The Lord said, you know what? I know what's coming and I know how it's going to look. And I'm so prepared for it that I will redeem for myself a people whom I have planted to live in those times. Why have I put them there? So that they would exalt the banner of Christ. And just as the Apostle John recorded, if he be lifted up, he would draw all men to themselves. Guys, we have been planted in this time so that we would erect the banner of Christ. It is no different for us in our age, in our day, than it is, has been for our brothers and sisters in the faith, our ancestors in the faith who've gone before us. We have our baton to run and our leg of the relay race of kingdom building, just as our brothers and sisters in the faith in Nigeria are doing right in this moment, just as our brothers and sisters in the faith in China are doing right in this moment, just as our family in Iran and our family in Iraq and our family in Syria and our family in other parts of the world are doing it, we must do the same in our day.
Who can find a virtuous wife? She's worth far more than rubies. The heart of her husband safely trusts her. She brings him good and not evil all the days of her life. She's like the merchant ships, bringing her food from afar. She gets up while it's still night and provides food for her family. She extends her hand to the poor. She opens her mouth with wisdom and on her tongue is the law of kindness. Her children rise up and call her blessed, her husband also, and he praises her. Charm is deceptive and beauty is fleeting, but a woman who fears the Lord is to be praised.
Shining light into the darkness, this is the Hamilton Corner on American Family Radio.
Welcome back to the Hamilton Corner. That's right, ladies and gentlemen, this is the time that we have been appointed for. This is our moment. Let's not miss our moment. And I know, I know what it is, when there is a temptation that we all undergo, we all undergo, when you see the things that are happening, it's no different than when Peter was beckoned by Jesus himself to come to meet him on the water. And when Peter stepped out of the boat, well, before Peter stepped out of the boat, the winds was just a rocking and a rolling, you know, tossing the boat, they cried out, you know, for fear, what's going on? And then Jesus came, you know, said, it is I. And Peter's like, Lord, if it's you, bid me come. Jesus said, it's me, Peter, come. Peter gets out of the boat in the face of all the wind, in the face of all the waves, in the face of all the turbulence that he was facing, but he stepped out of the boat. Why? Because he was fixed on the giver of the word who said, come. He was fixed on the Messiah, the Christ, who said, I am here on this water, come to me. But then, after Peter got out of the boat, he took his attention off the word giver and began to refocus on the wind. Now, the thing that's always intrigues me in that account in scripture is that it's the same wind that was blowing before Jesus said to him to come up, come to him. But after Peter stepped out of the boat, he refocused his attention back on the wind once again, and then he began to sink. And that is the way that things often happen in the lives of believers to where we're passionate, we're fired up, we're following the Lord in the face of adversity, in the face of difficulty, in the face of the wind, if you will, and we begin following the Lord. And then, once we get out of, we've gotten out of the boat, we yielded the temptation to once again divert our attention back toward the wind. And when that happens, that is when the questions begin to circulate. That's when the doubt creeps in and arises. And my encouragement to us is to refocus again on the word giver. My hope is anchored in the one who's assigned me and appointed me and appointed you and assigned you to this time. Let's not miss our moment. Let us make our contribution to lighting up the darkness. And as I say all the time, God's desire is not for you, nor I, to win the entire world, to change and impact the entire world, but he does expect us to impact our world, our spheres of influence, our families, the people that are around us. The Lord wholeheartedly expects us to exalt his name in those contexts. All right, I've been announcing this all throughout this week. This will be the last day I get the chance to announce it, because this Sunday, August 15th, at 10:45 a.m., Lord willing, I have been invited to minister and to preach at the Garrett Memorial Baptist Church in Hope, Arkansas. 10:45 a.m. is their Sunday morning service where I will be preaching. And I also will be ministering to the men at Garrett Memorial Baptist Church at their evening service in Sunday evening, which begins at about 5:00 p.m. If you're in the area or willing to travel to the area, I was told to, I could invite you. Pastor Johnson said, hey, hey, let them know. So you are invited to come out to the services this weekend. I am so looking forward to it. The Lord has given me something to share and by his grace, I will share that this, this, this coming Sunday. We're also in the first of the By Design monthly challenges. I shared with you yesterday that God has moved us at the American Family Association and through American Family Radio to become the hub for the post Obergefell pro-marriage movement. Our mission through By Design is to educate and encourage people to embrace God's design for marriage and family as the fundamental building block for all of human civilization. We want to do that by providing solid biblical articles, pod and podcasts, and also by having challenges that will allow us as well as our listeners to be doers and not just hearers of the word only. There's also a radio program on the AFR Network that airs called Entitled By Design, where you'll get to hear lots of people, Willie Mickey Addison will be there, I will be there with my lovely wife. If you've ever been interested and wanted to hear from my wife, you can hear us on By Design. We have a host of resources, you can hear Walker Wildman and his wife Lexi Wildman, you can hear Wesley and Chelsea Wildman. They're just a host of different, there are a number of different hosts who host the program, but the goal is to celebrate and to exalt God's teaching concerning marriage. So you don't want to miss out there. So if you go to AFA.net/ByDesign, that's AFA.net/ByDesign, you can click on the covenant challenge. We are asking married couples to go to AFA.net/ByDesign, where you will see a document to read and sign as a symbol of reaffirming your commitment to fight for and uphold God's covenantal design for marriage, God's covenantal design for marriage. And in addition to our mission to educate and to encourage people to embrace God's design for marriage, we also want to celebrate, to celebrate the union of one man and one woman as the objective institution that produces human flourishing. Praise God. All right. I alluded to this at the end of the program yesterday. I didn't get to delve into it in great detail, but I think it's important for you all to know, because I described, I mentioned what I describe as the Biden administration basically begging from OPEC. Now, why am I saying that? Many of you are familiar, upon taking office, Mr. Robinette, J. Robinette canceled the Keystone Pipeline, you remember that, ended up terminating 11,000 plus well-paying, high-paying jobs. They've taken other actions concerning federal leases and permits to drill for oil and natural gas and things on American soil. We have in the United States of America, one of the largest oil reserves and energy reserves in the world. But when you have people who have been mentally incapacitated by regressivism, which by the way, it is a mental disorder among other things, you are far more willing to get the same resources that you know we need. You know, I've shared before, I've had Dr. Cal Beiser on the program, that even if you want to have a more robust investment in what's being described as renewable energy sources, the technology is necessary to access those energy sources come from the current energy sources that we use, like fossil fuels. It's just foolish to do, to eliminate, to cut off our noses despite our face. It's foolish to neglect the resources that we have here in our own land and to import them from other countries while we, oh, by the way, enrich those other nations, make ourselves dependent on those other nations, while we have the very resources right here in our own country. It makes no sense. There's no logic, no reason, reasoning there. Well, as I said, in addition to scuttling federal leases and permits to drill and including on the Anwar province, the Robinette administration has also put a crunch on domestic oil production in other areas. Now, the, the thing that's amazing to me, like here's a perfect example, like I've said this before, and I told you guys about a friend that I had who did not, was not a supporter of President Trump, who supported Mr. Robinette, who told me, he said, hey, man, hey, man, I'm kind, I'm having, I'm having Biden regret, because what I wouldn't give for a few mean tweets and $2 gas right about now, you know? Mr. Robinette was asked the other day about this, the soaring nature of gas prices, and this is, this is what this guy had literally said, guys, this, can't make this stuff up. This is what he said. Mr. J. Robinette Biden said, quote, "Gas prices are lower than they were early in this decade, but they're still high enough to create a pinch on working families." Now, this is that, this is let that rest for a moment, let that set in your spirit for a moment. This is absolute, this is an absolutely absurd statement. You want to know why? So are you telling me, Mr. Robinette, that I am supposed to be comfortable with the fact that, well, you know, well, at least gas prices are not as high as they were when they were, oh, I don't know, the highest that they've ever been in the country? So I should be, I should be satisfied that, well, you know, at least they're not the highest they've ever been? Which by the way, you said earlier in this decade, will somebody remind me, who was in power in our country earlier in this decade when gas prices were the highest that they've ever been? Oh, oh, I see that hand, yes. When Joe Biden was vice president and Barack Obama was president? Yeah. So, so Mr. Robinette wants to bring comfort to the American people concerning the gas prices by reminding us, well, at least they're not as high as they were the last time I was at, had access to the White House. And isn't it not a thread of commonality that seems to run between those two points in time? But I want to, I want to show you that, of course, they have a plan, they, oh, they have a plan. Earlier this week, National Security Advisor Jake Sullivan released a statement on behalf of the Mr. Robinette administration. I'm going to read the whole statement, it's not very long, I'm going to read the entire thing though. And you can get this right from the White House's website, that's where I got it from. Said this, the title of it, "Statement by National Security Advisor Jake Sullivan on the Need for Reliable and Stable Global Energy Markets." This is what he said, quote, "Higher gasoline costs, if left unchecked, risk harming the ongoing global recovery. The price of crude oil has been higher than it was at the end of 2019, before the onset of the pandemic. While OPEC recently agreed to production increases, these increases will not fully offset previous production cuts that OPEC imposed during the pandemic until well into 2022. At a critical moment in the global recovery, this is simply not enough. President Biden has made clear that he wants Americans to have access to affordable and reliable energy, including at the pump. Although we are not a party to OPEC, the United States will always speak to international partners regarding issues of significance that affect our nationally economic, that affect our national economic and security affairs in public and private." Here's the money line right here, guys, get ready for it. "We are engaging with relevant OPEC plus members on the importance of competitive markets and setting prices. Competitive energy markets will ensure reliable and stable energy supplies, and OPEC plus must do more to support the recovery," end quote. The money line, "While we are engaging relevant OPEC members..." You know what that's called, guys? Begging! They're begging OPEC, please, oh, please, oh, please, oh, OPEC, please give us relief, please save us from our gas pump prices, please, oh, please, oh, please. And I just want to remind you that in 2020, for the first time in nearly 70 years, when former President Trump was in office, the United States of America had become a net energy exporter. That means we were selling more oil and liquid natural gas and natural resources to the world than we weren't importing. We were making money off of the natural resources that were produced in our own country. But Robinette comes in, shuts all that down. You don't have to be a, you don't have to be a performer rocket surgery to recognize, you shut down our own domestic pumping supplies, our production supplies, and you rely once again on foreign nations importing it to us, guess what? The prices are going to go up! The prices are going to go up! So we go from being a net exporter for the first time in nearly 70 years, to as soon as Robinette comes through, now we're once again dependent on OPEC. You know, some people may be comfortable with begging foreign nations for the stuff that we need, but I for one am not. The word begging in the United States of America doesn't sit well with me. Goodness gracious. Speaking of begging... Speaking of begging, I guess I'll start this. Seems like the Robinette administration have completely bungled the withdrawal of our troops from Afghanistan. Hmm. The situation there continues to deteriorate rapidly as we now have numerous reports that say the Taliban has taken, oh, taken over two more of the, two of the nation's largest cities and has reportedly seized American weapons and military equipment. This is a report from the Associated Press where it says this, quote, "The seizure of Kandahar and Herat make marks the biggest prizes yet for the Taliban, who have taken 12 of Afghanistan's 34 provincial capitals as part of a week-long blitz." The Association, Associated Press report goes on saying that the Taliban has also captured Ghazni, which cuts off a critical highway linking the nation's capital Kabul with the nation's southern provinces. It goes on to say this, quote, "While Kabul isn't, isn't, while Kabul itself isn't directly under threat, yet the losses and the battles elsewhere further tighten the grip of a resurgent Taliban who are estimated to now hold over two thirds, two thirds of the country, and they continue to press their offensive. The latest U.S. Military Intelligence Assessment suggests that Kabul could come under insurgent pressure within 30 days, and that if current trends hold, the Taliban could gain full control of the country within a few months." Did I mention that as a result of this Taliban has taken over U.S. Military Equipment, Weapons, Weapon Systems? Mm-hmm. The Taliban's rapid advancement through the country has netted them this extremist group, U.S. Military Vehicles, Anti-Aircraft Guns, Armored Tanks, and Artillery that were previously provided to Afghan Security Forces to fight against the Taliban. Well, now the Taliban has it. I have more to say on this, and I have one other major topic I want to get to that spans some other areas in the country, but I'll try to get in as much as I can before the disrespectful music comes on for the final time for today's program. You're listening to the Hamilton Corner right here on American Family Radio. There'll be more when we get back. You don't want to miss the rest of this show.
First you have to make a line. You have to, um, put some holes in the ground. And then you put the seed in the little hole. And then you pat it out and then water it. God sends the rain and the sun. If you wait for like a hundred a days, probably. You wait for a few years or so. And that's what it needs to grow.
Planting a garden takes planning, hard work, and God's blessing. So does creating a lasting legacy for the people and charities that mean the most to you. The AFA Foundation is here to help you sow the financial seeds God has blessed you with. We do this by offering free consultation in the areas of charitable gift annuities, estate planning, will and trust planning, and requests. To learn more, call 800-326-4543, extension 345, or visit afafoundation.net.
The Hamilton Corner Podcast and one minute commentaries are available at afr.net. Back to the Hamilton Corner on American Family Radio.
Welcome back to the Hamilton Corner. I got a lot to cover, so I want to keep moving. So Newsweek weighed in on this, and they're reporting that, well, actually, this, this comes from Bradley Brown, who's a senior director of the Center on Military and Political Power at the Foundation for Defense of Democracies. Uh, he said this, quote, "We've already seen the Taliban using captured Humvees to patrol Kunduz and Saripole." Newsweek then added, quote, "The Taliban have used American rifles to gun down Afghan National Army soldiers and explosive-laden American Humvees to bomb their checkpoints. Every fresh Taliban offensive brings with it pictures of captured weapons, ammunition, uniforms, fuel, and other vital military equipment. The beleaguered AAF and its 307,000 personnel require between $5 and $6 billion per year in funding, some 70%, 75% of which is funded by the U.S." In the face of all of this, just yesterday, our government, our adminis- the presidential administration announced that it was deploying thousands of troops to Afghanistan to assist with evacuating Americans. Thousands of troops. Pentagon spokesman John Kirby said there will be three battalions, one from the Army and two from the Marines. They will enter Afghanistan over the next 48 hours to assist with security at the Kabul Airport, and that a brigade of 4,000 Army soldiers was being sent to Kuwait to be on standby if more troops were needed. Now, former Secretary of State Mike Pompeo has a lot to say about this. He was interviewed by Martha MacCallum, and this is what he had to say. Listen to this in clip number three.
Well, it looks like this was poor planning, poor leadership, and the model of deterrence that the Trump administration had in place, that we prepared to bring the soldiers, sailors, Marines, everybody who's on the ground there home, looks like they've not been able to execute this. Martha, you know this, big, big strategy depends on planning and execution. Looks like there's a bit of panic. I hope that they've got the right number of folks, they can get them there quickly. I hope that we can protect Americans in the way that the Trump administration had every intention of doing as we drew down our forces there.
And how would you have done it differently?
Well, I don't know exactly what they're doing, but we had, we had conditions attached to how we were thinking about this withdrawal. I was part of those negotiations. I was also in the room when President Trump made very clear to Mullah Baradar, the senior Taliban negotiator, that if you threaten an American, if you scared an American, certainly if you hurt an American, that we would bring all American power to bear to make sure that we went to your village, to your house. We, we were very clear about the things we were prepared to do to protect American lives. And indeed, since we began those negotiations back in February of 2020, there wasn't a single American killed by the Taliban. We had established a deterrence model. I hope we haven't lost that for the Americans who are still on the ground there in Kabul. And then the last thing, Martha, we had begun the reduction of our operations in that embassy. I ordered a drawdown in the embassy in Kabul that took place. We were continuing to reduce our risk and our footprint there. I hope that they continued down that path. I hope that we are now in a place where we can get our folks out of there in a way that is rational and consistent, not only with the need to get our Americans home, but making sure that this ungoverned space doesn't become another hotbed for Al Qaeda or ISIS or some other radical Islamic terrorist group.
Now, did you hear him? When the Trump administration was in office, since they started having conversations about this transition out of Afghanistan, because there was a clear, as former Secretary Mike Pompeo said, a clear deterrence model was in place, not one American life, not one, not one, was jeopardized. Now, which by the way, I want to remind you, last month, Mr. Robinette said that it was, quote, "Not inevitable that the Taliban would take over the country once the U.S. left." Would he say that now? Because it seems very, very apparent that that is what's going on. And it seems like we're scrambling at the last minute, scrambling at the last minute. But when the Trump administration was in office, not one single American life was jeopardized. Now we're dispatching battalions. And, and, and we're at the point now, huh, this, this is sad. I mean, just like I mentioned, from a net exporter of energy to not begging OPEC to help us with our gas prices. The administration of Mr. Robinette is begging again. Mr. Biden is in his, in his minute, and his administration is reportedly pleading with Taliban terrorists to spare the U.S. Embassy in Kabul as they have asserted their control once again over Afghanistan. American negotiators are trying to extract assurances from the Taliban that they will not attack the U.S. Embassy in Kabul. Trying to extract assurances. Do you think the Trump administration was trying to extract assurances? Or do you think that Taliban leaders were aware that we probably should leave these folks alone because I don't know what this dude is going to do? Whereas now Mr. Robinette is the occupant of the Oval Office, and now we're trying to extract assurances from begging OPEC to now begging terrorists to please spare the U.S. Embassy. They're literally considering whether or not the U.S. Embassy in Kabul will have to be abandoned in total right at this moment because of the re-ascendancy, or I should say, the reassertion of Taliban control in Afghanistan. Night and day difference, folks, night and day difference. Well, now I want to turn to an issue that's percolating all through the country because yesterday I mentioned, uh, about how you have people in, in nations, European nations that are protesting, 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 but because, uh, they have governments that are completely closed really to any input from their citizenry, you know, they're, they're, they're more accustomed to having the citizenry be subjects as a, as opposed to our understanding that we are a nation of the people, by the people, for the people. Well, some of the same things are starting to happen in the United States of America. Uh, meant to get to this earlier, but I just ran out of time this week. I want you to listen to this audio where there's a, a teacher who is now a former teacher by the name of Laura Morris, who taught fifth grade at Luckets Elementary School in Leesburg, Virginia. Leesburg, Virginia is one of the areas that comes under the, the authority of the Loudoun County, Virginia School Board, Public School Board. Um, Laura Morris, in the face of the advancement of regressivism in her county, in spite of protests, remember Loudoun County is where it's all going down. Loudoun County is a place where Tanner Cross, uh, said he would refuse to implement, um, the, the new transgender policy. It's called Policy 8040. Want to make sure I say that properly. Yeah, Policy 8040, where basically they're marring the Imago Dei and saying, no, he did not make the male and female, uh, but that if you are a male, you very well could be a female, and we're going to address, adjust all public school policies to accommodate that, to even allow boys into girls bathrooms, locker rooms, and intimate spaces, and girls into boys bathroom locker rooms and intimate spaces. Tanner Cross said, first and foremost, I'm a Christian. Secondarily, to say that, say that is to lie to children, which I will not do. Thirdly, lying to children in this fashion is child abuse. And he made those statements in his own per- private capacity at the school board meeting, and the school board tried to fire him for that, preventing him, barring him from making his way onto campus. Tanner Cross had to get legal assistance, filed a lawsuit. The courts forced Loudoun County to comply, to, to refuse to discipline Tanner Cross for him asserting his First Amendment protected religious beliefs. Loudoun County is where parents were opposing critical race theory. Loudoun County is where Xi, Xi Zhan Fleet, Xi Van Fleet, the woman who escaped Mao's Communist China to make it to America to build a life for herself in Loudoun County. Well, the question is, parents are speaking, but are the school board members listening? Listen first to Laura Morris, uh, as she basically announced her resignation, announces her resignation from being an elementary school, an elementary public school, public school teacher. It's clip one, go.
Within the last year, I was told in one of my so-called equity trainings that white, Christian, able-bodied females currently have the power in our schools and that, quote, "This has to change." You shut the doors to the public as well as the emails sent by the superintendent last year, reminding me that a dissenting opinion is not allowed even to be spoken in my personal life, going so far as to send a form to my colleagues and I, encouraging us to fill it out. I quit your policies. I quit your trainings, and I quit being a cog in a machine that tells me to push highly politicized agendas on our most vulnerable constituents, the children.
Now, this woman taught for 10 years by own testimony, five of them in Loudoun County, but got into the place to where there's no room for reasonable disagreement. There's no room for dissenting voices, and it caused her to say, "I quit. I quit." At the end of her testimony, she said, "I hope that the parents in Loudoun County flood the private schools because you can't trust the public schools in Loudoun County with your children." That's what she said. Now, let me be clear. She said she hopes that the parents in Loudoun County flood the private schools. The additional comments were my own, but her sentiment was because you can't trust the, the schools there with, with your children. Well, this same county, this same county, that was on Tuesday this week. That was a part of debating this Policy 8040, which would, as I said, uh, basically, basically embrace the, the transgender ideology and applied into all Loudoun County public schools K through 12, beginning in elementary school, which by the way, this policy would be immediately implemented. So when children return to public school in Loudoun County in a week or two, this policy will have been enacted. Why am I saying that? Because on Tuesday, the school board said, "We're going to reconvene on Wednesday to vote on whether or not this policy will be passed." Well, Loudoun County, one of the wealthiest counties in America, just about 40 miles uh, from Washington DC, they voted seven to two, seven to two, to embrace Policy 4080, the transgender ide- ideology embracement policy. There are nine members of the Loudoun County School Board, two of them voted against this policy. Jeffrey Morse and John Beatty voted against the policy. The remaining seven Loudoun County School Board members voted in favor of it. Brenda Sheridan, Atusa Reeser, Dennis Corbo, Harris Mahavadi, Harris Mahadavi, Ian Sirockin, Leslie King, and Beth Bartz, all voted in favor of the policy. Again, parents stood, voiced their concerns, protests, and the school board said, "No, thank you. We're going to do it anyway." A similar thing happened in Williamson County, Tennessee. Again, one of the wealthiest counties in the United States of America. The Williamson County School Board's issue that I'm going to talk about here was mask mandates. The Williamson County School Board was considering whether or not we're going to reinstitute because they had one in the past. They lifted it, but whether or not they're going to reinstitute for this school year, a mandate that all children wear masks. Well, guess what? Parents showed up en masse in Williamson County, Tennessee. Parents voiced their opposition, and the school board said, "Thank you, but no, thank you. We're going to do it anyway." And listen to the parents' response to the Williamson County School Board saying, "We're going to mandate that children have to wear masks to come to school." Listen to this in clip two. Now, I want to make sure you understand what, what happened there. In the Williamson County School Board meeting, the board voted to mask, to mandate every child and teacher and person at the Williamson County Public School System to wear masks. There was one parent who was outraged, and when you heard the cheering, it was one parent who went up to the board and said that your actions will have consequences. To where he basically was threatening political repercussions for the school board members who are elected for their decisions to mask. Well, you heard the, 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 the parents that were at the meeting, supporting this individual parent, and then soon thereafter, parents began to exit the school board meeting one by one, by one, by one, by one. Now you can hear from that audio that the energy, the momentum, the zeal, the passion was among those who did not want to have their children in Williamson County masked. But did the school board listen? No, they did not. So my question is, what are you going to do when the school board doesn't listen to you? When the, the schools are supposed to be aiding the parents, right? Well, it seems that many of our school boards around the country have agendas, and they don't care what parents have to say. What I am saying is that we have been ba- made and appointed for such a time as this. How are you going to respond to the time that God has placed you in? I will tell you this, I'm not letting the government get its hands on, grubby hands on my children, no way, no how.
The views and opinions expressed in this broadcast may not necessarily reflect those of the American Family Association or American Family Radio.